Recording already going. Great. So, good evening and welcome to the May 31st, 2022 Special City Council Meeting. I am Mayor Ross. Tonight's City Council Meeting is being conducted in the City Hall Council Chambers and is brought to you live using video conferencing technology provided by Zoom. Tonight's recording will be posted on the city's YouTube channel. Just as a reminder, please speak directly into the microphone so those joining us virtually would be able to hear you. So, thank you everyone for joining us tonight. Lady Clark, would you please call the roll?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mayor Ross. Present. Councilmember Benson.
Present.
Councilmember Christiansen. Here. Councilmember Holloway.
Here.
Councilmember Johnson.
Here.
Councilmember Mayhew. Councilmember Watten.
Here.
Councilmember Les, they previously asked for an excused absence and I believe Councilmember Mayhew will be joining us.
Recording in progress.
Okay. Um.
That's funny.
Councilmember. Councilmember Les, they have requested being excused, absent tonight's meeting. Is there motion excusing Councilmember Les, say?
So moved.
Second. So moved by Councilmember Vincent, second by Councilmember Christiansen. Any discussion? All those approve, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion passes, yes, three. Councilmember Les, say, absence is excused. Has our additional customer joined yet?
Give not.
Give not, okay. Do we go ahead and excuse them, Councilmember Mayhew? As a reminder, members must seek recognition from the chair before speaking and be sure to raise your hand. Councilor, please stand and join me in saying this. Johnson, please pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Right. Now move on to the first item of business, which is to approve the agenda. Councilman Mayhew, motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Move by Councilmember Johnson, second by Councilwoman Watten to approve the agenda. Any discussion? Hearing then, all those approve, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Right, motion passes to approve the agenda. The first item of special business this evening is Agenda Bill 22-073. Fifth Amendment Agreement between the City of St. Kwame and Kwame Tribe for Provision of and Sewer Utility Service to the Tribe's Initial Reservation. So currently, the city supplies sewer services for the casino, gas station, and convenience store. The Fifth Amendment would authorize increases in the quantity of wastewater flow and load services provided by the city to the St. Kwame Tribe for hotel and expansion of the East Kwame Casino. The Fifth Amendment also provides for payment to the city of more than $6 million in general facilities charges and contributions in aid of construction as well as payment of additional monthly wastewater charges. The Fifth Amendment also provides for coordination between construction of the city capital sewer utility projects and expansion of the Kwame Casino. Adjust the terms of the agreement and provides for remedies. Councilor's motion to approve the Fifth Amendment to the agreement between the City of Kwame and Kwame Tribe for the provision of sewer utility service to the Tribe's initial reservation and operating the merit to sign. So moved. There a second?
Second.
So moved by Councilmember Christiansen, second by Councilmember Watten. Is there any public comment on this item? If we understand that public comments must relate to the Fifth Amendment to the agreement between the City of Kwame and Kwame Tribe. Please bring your comments to two minutes. If you're in the attendees, you can raise your hand. Or, let's see. I think it's star nine to raise your hand if you're calling in. Give that company up their second. I don't think anyone online in the attendees raising their hand. And there's not any public in the council chambers. Again, if you do want public comments, press star nine. And I actually, and also star six to mute and unmute. I do not see any public comments, so council, is there any discussion on this item? Councilmember Vincent.
Yeah, this is, um, a big deal. I feel like the better we can explain it before we vote on it. There's no public discussion about it or anything like that, but I feel like the, I think it's incumbent upon us to talk about what we're voting on here because it's significant.
Absolutely. The chairman's.
Oh, and I'm sorry. Councilmember Mayhew can't find the link. He's having difficulty getting links, but. We can get that to him.
The chairman's there, right?
I can't certainly, and I was, I was just going to suggest he, he could, I use the link from the calendar on the city's website. That's one.
From the agenda as well.
Separately.
The Councilmember Mayhew is going to join, you know, wait.
You want a five-minute recess?
I think he'll join very soon.
Okay.
Our IT Director Kevin, have you seen him join in?
No, ma'am, I have not.
Okay, yeah, Mayor Proton Mayhew is joining us at 6:10 PM. City Attorney, could you please go over the highlights?
Certainly, Mayor, thank you. So, the primary components of the agreement are called out in the staff's board, but I will just try to touch on the main pieces. First of all, the agreement spells out the additional flow and load capacity or certain frequent services that the city would provide to the tribe. Currently, those are expressed in the agreement in the form of equivalent residential units. For purposes of this agreement, those are fleshed out in a bit more detail in terms of on the flow side. Gallons per day on an average annual basis, gallons per day in the maximum month. Gallons, the maximum hour. And so, the agreement more precisely identifies quantities of both flow and load for existing operations as well as what those quantities would be for the existing operation combined with the hotel and casino expansion. And those numbers are all detailed in the staff work. And then additionally, as the mayor outlined, the agreement provides for payment by the tribe of general facilities charges. And those are defined in the existing city code as a new customer's pro-rata or fair share of the existing system costs as well as cost of anticipated planned capital improvements that are included in the city's capital improvement program necessary to serve both existing city and new growth. And so, those fees are calculated for the hotel and casino expansion on the basis of the addition of load or biochemical oxygen demand because that is the most significant component of the anticipated wastewater stream. And so, those fees or charges combined with some additional aeration improvements that are necessitated by the expansions that come to approximately $6.6 million. Mayor outlined in her opening comments. Yeah, per the Fifth Amendment, those payment would be due within 10 business days of execution of the agreement. There are existing planned capital improvement projects that the city is in the process of designing and constructing. Those are necessary to serve planned growth. They're also necessary to serve hotel and casino expansion. And so, the Fifth Amendment also outlines a process for coordination between the city and the tribe to make sure that the startup of the hotel and casino expansion can be matched with the city's completion of the necessary improvements. So, there's somewhat of a graduated or incremental process of improvements coming on line whereby there will be some limited facilities testing first, a soft opening, and then later eventual full opening of the hotel and casino expansion conditioned on substantial completion of the city's planned Phase III wastewater reclamation facilities project. And so, that'll make sure that the improvements that are needed to serve the new development are ready and substantially completed in time. So, those are the primary components, Mayor, as you outlined. There are additional adjustments in the agreement for remedies and term and typical contractual provisions. There are all way in the document in detail, but those are the primary pieces.
Thank you. Thank you. Is there any discussion?
Yeah, Madam Mayor.
Councilmember Vincent.
Could we maybe outline some of the benefits to the city that will come from the, from this?
I think one of them is they are already our biggest customer. And, and it's a, this whole negotiation has been really collaborative effort between both parties. You know, both the city and the tribe were very important to each other. And I think this will assist in both of our, our government's economic development and tourism goals as well. It does benefit our residents because it also allows some expansion of our wastewater treatment facility and provides general facility charges for additional investment in inner utilities.
So then, the wastewater treatment improvements aren't only going to be serving the casino, they would, they would be enhancing the capabilities of our wastewater treatment plan for the entire city.
Yes, your charges would go towards, towards that as well, yes, absolutely. Besides an investment in there for additional aeration facility. Absolutely. Councilmember Mayhew.
Recording in progress.
Sorry, I'm having some technical difficulties.
Mayor Proton Mayhew, are you able to speak without the echo?
Sorry, can you hear me now, Mayor?
Yes, we can.
Okay, sorry about that, some technical difficulties. And so, I apologize. I missed some of the intro, but if I could just make a few comments about why I think this is a significant agreement.
Absolutely.
So, this is, and apologize for any repeat, but this is an agreement that has been being worked on for about two years now. The, this started then when the current agreement to provide sewer services to the casino was coming towards the end of its six-year term. And there'd been a history of that, then there's some difficulty around the notion of only having six-year terms. And we were able to talk through with the tribe that issue and agree on a, an extension that didn't, that, that had the six year. Well, I remember if we took that out then or whether we took or take taking out in this agreement, but we talked about the importance of a permanent agreement since, of course, the casino's built and it's operating and we're used to handling that flow in our, in our facility. So, that was a big achievement, agreeing that we would kind of go forward on a more permanent basis. And then, based on that, they came and talked to us about their future expansion needs. There, there's a lot involved in that discussion, how we work together with the tribe, their sovereignty, the fact that we're providing services to them, and how to work through being a city and working with them. So, this is much bigger than just the agreement that we have here. This is a successful negotiation on a more permanent arrangement. And I think it's, it's very significant. There was a lot of, I guess, trust issues, I would say, a lot of concerns with the tribe trusting the city and with the city trusting the tribe. And that's why it took two years to negotiate this. It was a lot of hard work by the tribe and by the folks from the city. And this really kind of came to culmination over the last five to six months when the new mayor really grabbed onto this and drove it sort of, if you forgive a football analogy, over the goal line. And that is very significant. It's built a lot of trust, so not just between the city and the tribe, but between the new mayor and the tribe. And this is going to bode very well going forward. As for the city, this is, there are, there's about $6 million worth of money that comes in to help pay for our infrastructure. Now, most of that is typical of any new facility coming into our, to our system. But they are paying the way for, they're paying for all of that facility that they're going to use. So, as happens, and I know sometimes it's a little difficult for folks to follow this, I mean, general public, but we, the city, build what we need for today and what we need for the future. Required, we're required to do that by state law. So, that's what we do. And then, we're repaid for that when folks book up. So, this is, this $6 million then goes into our system and it's available for then funding future expansions of the system. That's significant. That's something we paid for as residents and now is, is being returned to us. And then, there's some additional costs that is being incurred just for the tribe. And they're paying about $1 million for that additional cost. The rest of this is $6 million towards our system improvements that were already happening anyway. So, it, it's fantastic for our system. They're paying their fair share. We have the capacity. We've outlined in this agreement the timing of when they can come, come online. And that's coincident with our capacity being available to take care of them. And then, this fits into our overall plan that looks out 10, 20 years as to expanding all of the capacity that we'll need for them. And it's $6 million that goes in to that process.
Great, thank you, Councilmember Mayhew. And for your, your comments, you know, Mayor Proton Mayhew has also been the council liaison to the tribe for the last couple of years. And I think that he has helped set, he's helped set the framework for this agreement, but also helped work on relationships. And so, I would like to thank Mayor Proton Mayhew and then also our St. Kwame tribal member, Councilmember Chris Castleberry, and also the Executive Director of Government Affairs, Jimmy Martin, who, among others, helped negotiate this agreement in good faith. And I think it's been mutually beneficial for, for both parties. It's positive locally and has positive regional impact. And, you know, we passed this with Florida working with the Kwame Tribe on future projects. Well, are there any additional comments or discussion? Right. In them. Right, are we ready to vote then? So, those, no further questions than all those in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
The opposed name. All right, motion passes unanimously for the Fifth Amendment of the agreement between the City of Kwame and the Kwame Tribe for the provision of and sewer utility service to the Tribe's initial reservation is approved. So, this is fantastic. Thank, thank you. Right, moving on, the second item of business is Agenda Bill 22-075, 2023 to 2028 Capital Improvement Plan Presentation of the Mayor's Proposed CIP and Council Deliberations. So, Council, I'm pleased to present the proposed capital improvement plan for facilities, parks, transportation, and utilities. And this capital investment plan has been thoughtfully prepared and addresses several strategic council priorities. The $152.4 million proposed CIP is a financially sound, responsible, and balanced investment in our community. And the plan preserves the city's financial, financially stable condition, provides for proactive maintenance of critical infrastructure, and invests strategically in improvements designed to enhance the quality of life for the residents of Kwame. So, special thanks to our Senior Financial Analyst, Ju Bute, Interim Finance Director, Jim Ferguson, and part of the finance team, Jenna Walker, and our Products and Public Works Group, and all of the city staff who have contributed to the development of this plan. And the proposed CIP will be presented by staff and then opened up for City Council deliberations this evening. And please note that this item is scheduled to be discussed again at our June 13th Special Council Meeting and the July 11th Regular Council Meeting. And then, final approval is currently scheduled by the July 20, for July 25th Regular Council Meeting. While there's not an opportunity for public comment this evening, the public will have an opportunity to attend a hybrid public open house on June 9th and then speak through public comments at our July 11th and July 25th Regular Council Meetings. So, at this, I will welcome our Interim Finance Director, Jim Ferguson, and Senior Financial Analyst, Ju Bute, who will be presenting the CIP. Thank you, Mayor Ross. Councilmembers, it's a pleasure to meet you all, actually in person, not this way. But I'm happy to be here tonight. The mayor has presented the 2023 through 2028 Six-Year Capital Improvement Plan. It was attached to the agenda and is available for your review and consideration as the mayor indicated over the next couple of months. I wanted to orient the council and the community a little bit about the CIP plan document, a little bit about what the capital plan does. This is a financial management tool that helps to identify investment in capital assets for the community. The objective is to establish a plan where there's no surprises. And there are certainly projects and programs in the plan that have partial funding, have maybe no funding at all, but it leases in the list. And so, it also shows the community that it's on the list and we're aware that these capital investments need to be made. The CIP provides for projected costs. They are estimates and they are also estimates of funding sources that we anticipate using to pay for those capital investments. This is a, the CIP is a requirement of the Growth Management Act and is also included in the comprehensive plan identified in the capital facilities element and commonly mirrors in the comprehensive plan and the Six-Year CIP. Just a couple of terminology pieces you'll find in the Capital Improvement Plan Program versus Project. Programs are the continuous improvement or maintenance or preservation of assets that are already established in the PNDs. So, examples that we have would be a street resurfacing program, or always going to be doing that work every year in some fashion. Capital project is a one-time investment, might run over the course of a couple of years because of the nature of capital projects, they take a while to plan and then, of course, construct. And so, examples of those might be facility, an acquisition of land or major improvements to our utilities. So, the next few slides that I believe are up for you are a brief, we'll do a brief overview of the Capital Improvement Plan. But I want to encourage you and residents and those who are interested in the capital plan to go into the actual document. It'll be available on the website. We presented it in a framework that hopefully is easy to access without having to use paper. And so, there is a table of contents on the website if you hold that document. But it would be available to review. And those detailed project sheets you'll find on page 35, starting of the Capital Improvement Plan. Because that's really where, when questions are asked about, are we doing this project or could we do this? That's where we want to have those conversations about those projects because it identifies an overview. It identifies estimates of those costs more, more in-depth as well as those funding sources. So, the, the entire proposed capital plan is about. is about $153 million in spending over the next six-year period of time. To cover that, we've identified about $163 million in sources. And that comes from perhaps grant funding. It comes from contributions from development. It comes from our cash that's included, aside, that the city has saved up over time. Potential bond proceeds that we may have to issue for those larger projects that we want to get done now and have more folks who are moving into the community pay, help pay over time. And then of course, there is tax revenues. But that is in, again, details are in those project sheets. With regards to how are we going to spend that money or where should we spend that money? There are capital projects totaling about $113 million. That includes utility infrastructure improvements. It includes transportation, street improvement projects. It includes facility development. And it also includes park improvements as well as information technology projects. On the preservation side, this is that capital programs. There is about $23 million identified for the preservation of our utility systems as well as our streets and then of course, our facilities and parks. You of the significant projects that are in the plan include a community center expansion project, a river, Riverwalk project, and that has many facets to it. So there are a number of projects that are separated out. But this is for investment in the Riverwalk. There's also investment in all-inclusive playgrounds as well as Sandy Cove Park improvements. In our transportation category, there is projects that include the Simpahami Parkway, the Kimball Creek Bridge replacement and town center improvements. And that would be phase three of town center improvements. On the utility side, there are capital projects and programs that are devoted to utility main and drainage system replacement, Sandy Cove Park Riverbank restoration, urban forestry stormwater improvement program. And there is a water reclamation facility improvement also included in the plan. And finally, on the utility side, the plan proposes SR202 Bridge Utility Main Replacement Project, Source of Water Supply, which is very important to always keep in our sights. And then of course, Watermaid Loop Project. So what are the next steps? This is a six-year plan that is proposed. The questions to the council then, as we hand it off to you for deliberations, are, are these projects the ones that you'd like to see in the six-year plan? If not, what else? And let us help you identify what those are. The goals then would be over the next couple of months for staff to be listening, to incorporate your comments, you know, your priorities, your interests. And then we would be bringing back any final changes as you consider this for final approval at the end of July. And then of course, there's still more, more work to be done. It's not final because the first two years of the six-year CIP are included in the biennial budget. And that is where the council sets the final allocation, actual next two years that we would then start capitalizing those projects and those programs. So I want to thank the City Council for their work so far on this. And I think Mayor Ross as the administrator and all of the staff team, I think I have about 90 days in here. And so a lot of work has gone into the capital improvement program over the years. But everyone has worked very diligently, very efficiently and very effectively to put together a proposal for you. We're here to answer any questions that you do have tonight and of course, over the next couple of months. So I want to thank you and thank everyone involved. Thank you. The council, we have any questions or any particular projects we have, may I have questions on? The Mayor Proton Mayhew.
Hi, can you hear, hear me okay? Great. So there's a lot to digest here. Thank you all for putting together a great presentation and we've got our, our homework cut out for us. I don't have any questions today about any specific items, but I have sort of a, a general question. And I wonder if it's either in here, in which case you just point me to it. Or if not, perhaps this could be sort of prepared. I, the way I've sort of thought about capital spending over the last, you know, few years is first off, to sort of separate it into pieces, sorry, let me back up. It has to do with how we fund different things. And so for me to kind of understand this, I separate out the utilities capital plan because that's entirely funded by the utility system. So sort of putting those together makes it confusing because there are specific funding sources for specific spending. So having that sort of separate out is important. And then with what's, from what's remaining is to be able to see what our ongoing funding sources are. So for example, the REIT fund and so forth. So what are the ongoing tax revenues? And then showing those in comparison to our capital programs to see if, if those are sustainable at the levels we're at from ongoing revenues. And then there's sort of all the revenue, all the remaining sources. And then there's all the projects. So if it's possible to break those three out, so we can just see, and whether that's in there, maybe just point me at it. Or if that's something that could be put together, just so we can kind of focus on, again, the three buckets would be the utilities separate from then the rest of capital. And then the rest of capital showing the ongoing tax sources in comparison to the programs. And then the remaining sources in comparison to the projects. So that's sort of my question slash request.
So thank you very much for the question, Mayor Proton. If we could just direct your attention to the document, starting potentially on page 14. So we do within the capital sources summary provide a couple of pie charts that are broken down between the non-unities or what I think we've referred to as capital versus utilities. In terms of what you're discussing with the capital program and debt service sustainability, we do have a section of that within the document, starting on page 18. It goes all the way through page 19 of it ultimately, where we provide two tables. One for both non-unities describing the capital program debt service sustainability for non-unities as well as the capital program and debt service sustainability for utilities. And within these tables, we provide a sustainability ratio for you, for your consideration. In addition to that, we do have on pages 33 through 34, I think what we have commonly provided in the past to council, which is a couple of financial schedules, both one for the non-unities as well as utilities that provide, or at least describe the sources and the uses for each portion of the CIP itself. And so I think with that, I think we've covered probably pretty substantially what you're looking for. But if there's anything that we're missing, we're more than happy to provide that detail. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That's fantastic. I will focus there.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yeah, I was also trying to just follow the, the funding sources on a lot of these projects. So I'm sure that it's probably somewhere in here that I just didn't happen to see. But I was wondering if any of our ongoing programs would be funded either entirely or in part by the fund balances that we would otherwise have to spend on one-time things. Meaning like, do we have ongoing revenue to pay for the ongoing programs? Or are we taking things that could go to one-time projects and putting that money toward our programs?
So my answer to that would be I would continue to look on page 19, given that section itself, which we have titled capital program and debt service sustainability. Like I said, the two tables there, you're not going to see cash balances as part of those two tables. And so really what we're referencing within that table is just the ongoing resources we're going to collect on an annual basis. And you have that basically below that, the estimate reoccurring uses to over time that include both capital programs and debt service.
Thank you.
Councilwoman?
Thank you, Mayor. One of the, the largest items, and I just wanted to make sure that I, I wrap my, my head around and, and also call some attention to, and that's the community center expansion, just because of the, the sheer size of that as a portion of the entire capital improvement plan. And it, it will necessitate a small debt that the city would take on. And I, I think for my edification and for that of the citizens to understand what the impact is on our overall debt and what it basically leaves us as a council to act on in the future if, if we need to bond for other projects and what kind of an impact would either Deb or Drew be willing to kind of highlight that?
I think it depends on page 20. Is that correct?
Yeah, that's correct. So we have a debt summary provided on page 20, where we provide you with a calculation of the general obligation debt limit overall for the city, which is a proportion of our assessed valuation. So we're within legal limits. If we do happen to take on this additional debt issuance, anticipate we would have approximately $44.6 million of available capacity for us to take on non-voted debt, which is the margin available to us provided in this table.
So a significant amount would still be available after doing this project as well?
Yes, correct. Yeah. But I think you raised a good point with the community center. Things have changed, right? Since we have last been in front of you since the retreat. And so it's important to kind of call out the community center itself because we have had significant conversations with the YMCA since then. They have provided us with a concept for the most part, including a kind of a preliminary cost proposal as well. And so as a result of that, our contribution, that contribution from the city has increased. And that's why you're seeing roughly $7 to $8 million debt issuance in here. One of the things that I do want to call out, making sure that we're fully transparent with you is we haven't necessarily identified the proper revenue source in order to support the debt payment by yet. And so from here on, we're going to be having discussions with you regarding what that might look like. If we want to actually take out a bond, for example. There could be potential alternatives when we look at the scoping of the project overall. Or, you know, maybe there are additional grant resources that we haven't kind of considered as a part of this. But right now, within the plan itself, we do have roughly $7 to $8 million bond that we're proposing at this stage. But with some undefined issue regarding how we're going to support that over time right now.
And I know that Councilmember Johnson and Councilmember Richardson had shown interest in State Park, and that's actually part of it. In, built in 2023.
Yeah, on that, early concepts for the community center expansion also heard from a six-flat pool, which is what's described here. I had a heated pool, I believe, for little kids and stuff. I was wondering if that's still in the plan or if that's been mixed.
So it actually has two tanks. One is a warm, warm tank pool. And then the other one would be the, it's some of the drawings show a three lane. We're hoping to get additional funding possibly from the school district, so they can be used for competitive swimming. So this price of our price we have here is for six lanes. They do have the warming tank that would be younger, younger people, so.
Yeah.
Councilperson?
Yeah, this is just an amazing document. I'm, I'm really excited that you're making it available to the public so that they can see everything. It's, it's really just a giant stack of projects. It's amazing what, how many things a city has to do in order to make the city stay a city. But what I, what I'm wondering is if we could articulate, if a citizen has a question or a concern or a problem with one of these projects or an idea that they'd like to contribute to, what's the process whereby a, a citizen could, could make comment on this and maybe influence any of these projects? Or, or perhaps improve on something that we haven't thought of. That's not a disparagement to you guys. I know all you guys are brilliant. But, but ideas happen all the time. So there's, there's got to be a time limit because you guys are going to be starting these projects and, and executing these projects. How do they, how does a citizen go about speaking to any of these?
I'll just say a couple of things that were, so Mike here, as well as Jen, they're both working on the open house, right, for June 9th. But one of the things that we're also contemplating internally is kind of the survey. And overall, and I'm sure they have further details on that. Can discuss that with you.
Good evening, councilmembers. As always, citizens can reach out directly to me. They can link directly to my email or phone off the city website. If I don't answer, I'll get an answer as soon as possible. And yes, we are working on the open house for the ninth floor. Literally, we're going to have tables set up with rooms of several people that know those projects backwards, forwards. And they'll be ready for any question anybody wants to ask. But by all means, if anybody has anything they'd like to add or talk to us, please call us. That's why we're here.
And councilmembers are invited to attend June 9th, Thursday night, open house here. Was there a comment about survey or? Just a want to clarify, what time is the open house on Thursday? Most likely starting at 6:00 PM. Thank you, Mayor. We also wanted to approach accepting feedback from the public, which is always welcome. It is an online open house. So we're planning to put that out for the public. They can find the link to that on the website. And so that they can provide comments, they can provide some thoughts and ideas. And we would then be collecting those and bringing those to the council as you continue to deliberate the plan. And so that is how we're looking to communicate with folks. Maybe I also have a couple of public comment periods planned during, there's two future council meetings. We will be deliberating on the CIP. Councilperson?
There was a, one more item on here that I wanted to call out specifically that that while I'm excited about it, especially that we have a funding source for it, but that I am somewhat concerned about with the operating cost and what I could give to that part of the budget and how we fund it. And that's the, the proposed ladder track. So I don't know if the work has been done yet to figure out what the ongoing operating cost would be to sustain that and to have the staff needed to operate it. But yeah, I was just a little bit concerned about how much that would add up to on a yearly basis. So, you know, if you have answers now, that's great. Or if I just missed somewhere in here, awesome. But just in the future, when it comes But just in the future, when it comes time to talk about that one in particular, that's a concern that I have.
Any other comments, questions? Go around. Councilor Holloway, do you have any questions or comments?
No, this is a chunk of material to go through and have not been given opportunity to go through it. So I will take, do that and look forward to conversations in parks and public works concerning streets, utilities and parks.
May you, any additional comments?
No, I agree with Councilor Holloway that there's a lot to take in, a lot to study here. So I'm just I'm chuckling, I'm going to say it's, I'm excited to get in and dig into it. Of course, it's a lot of work, so excited isn't quite the right verb. But anyway, no, I'm really looking forward to this. This is laid out. I think there'll be a lot of questions. Maybe Mayor or staff, could you just comment on what's sort of the best way for all of us to? It seems to me there's going to be two kinds of things that happen. One is each of us may have questions. And then secondly, there'll be things that we'll all need to discuss. So I think we've got the meetings laid out to discuss them. You went over that. That's great. As far as getting questions answered, what is this or how does such a thing, such a thing over here work and so forth? How would you like to have that? And I apologize if you already laid that out, but could you just go over that again of how we can sort of go through our homework now and get questions as we go?
I think you can reach out to whichever director, such as our Parks and Public Works Director Shambless. Or if you have questions, you can reach out to Chief Carrera regarding the ladder truck. And I think a lot of, there's a lot of more information coming, especially regarding the ladder truck. You can email them and then when he responds, you actually respond to all council members so everyone has the same information. So others might be thinking the same question as well. So you can reach out individually to them. Again, we have a actually special budget workshop coming on, on June 13. That would be the council deliberations of the CIP. And then a couple additional regular council meetings, as well as you attend the personally works, projects will be reviewed there. So I encourage other council members that are not sitting on Parks and Public Works to also attend those.
Great. Thank you, Mayor.
Any other questions? Councilor Minton?
No, not at this time. Golly, I'm looking forward to the reading.
Councilor Martin?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm most interested about the fire truck discussion and leased cars as well. I don't know, there seems to be a car vehicle theme to my interest.
I think the lease car, that would be part of the ERR fund and that would be a later discussion.
Right.
The CIP.
Right. Thank you.
Councilor Richardson?
I appreciate the material and the work that we're into putting this together. I haven't a chance to review it, but we'll certainly look forward to diving in. So there's lots to digest, but looks like there's some fantastic pieces of plan.
Councilor Johnson?
I do think that all council members should be given Teslas. One thing that I was thinking about was that we have a number of projects that are kind of in this table that's on page seven that are in the green, yellow and red. And the yellow is stuff that's partially funded and then the red is simply the, we don't have the money yet figured out for those. Is there anything in the yellow or the red that's a particularly high priority that we should be thinking of as this is something we want to get done in the near term, but we just haven't figured out the funding yet? Or has the administration already gone through and kind of put the things that are the highest priority in the funding that they need to make so that we get those done fast? Does that make sense, my question?
Because I think a lot of the items in yellow are, there might be grants coming in or, you know, applying for different grants for the projects, such as community center expansion would be one. Drew, do you have any other comments regarding that?
Yes, Mayor, that's correct about the yellow section. And S is for waiting on certain grant funding approvals in order to construct these projects. If we don't actually achieve those grant funding approvals, then we won't necessarily have sufficient funding to complete those during the kind of this next two-year period or within the six-year plan itself. In terms of the red that you see here, which we describe as alternative capital projects or programs, the city actually went through a pretty extensive internally scoring process right around 2019, prior to the pandemic, for example. And so the listing that you see here is kind of in the priority order that was set by the CIP staff committee back then, for the most part. In terms of the scoring itself, we had, we eight criteria that those eight criteria were goal plan component. So making sure that it connects critically with some specificity to a council or objective. What was the net benefit to the community? What's the distribution of the impact? So for example, how many residents are going to benefit from the project itself? Is there a legal mandate of reliability that's in play for the most part that we need to guard against? What is the potential impact on operations? So what is, is it going to cost us substantially in terms of our operations and it might score a little bit lower? Does it help us to preserve our system and assets? Because we want to make sure that there's no failures in it or anything like that. What's the impact on health and safety? And the last one, what is the environmental impact? So within the brain trust that we kind of had here in the city at that time, we had seven members, both from Parks and Public Works, the Finance Department, as well as Community Development, kind of participating in exercising, we aggregated those scores into one kind of ranking list for the most part. And so those that were able to fund is what you've kind of seen the green section, green and yellow section, and what you see in the red kind of fell below that line of what we could really actually fund during the six-year period. So it's been a continuation of that, kind of same set list of projects through to today. Maybe the next go-around, we would, we can get through quite a few of these projects. For example, the next go-around, we would reconsider and maybe reopen up the list for proposals, for example, from the Parks and Public Works Department for the public. And then go back through a scoring process internally, but also making sure that you guys also have the opportunity to kind of score as well alongside of us too and kind of see what we're thinking and if that really lines up or aligns with how you're thinking too. So that's kind of what we went through and that's why you have this kind of division amongst these colors.
Yeah, Councilor Holloway, did you hand your hand raised earlier?
Well, I guess I was just kind of concerned. I've got Parks, Facilities, Maintenance Program for $30,000, roughly $30,000 a year. I don't understand that as capital versus operating expense.
Well, I think we are working through the financial policies right now, the comprehensive financial policies that will help us to kind of further define exactly what those boundaries are between operating as well as capital itself. So I think from our perspective, the reason why you might see something like that in here is because it exceeds a capitalization threshold of roughly $50,000 over the six-year period. If you add it all up together. In addition to that, some of the facilities that we would maybe propose would be a direct replacement of those facilities. So not just, say, general maintenance within a bathroom overall, but for example, the building, viewing shelter at some point park would be something that might be contemplated as part of this or any sort of upgrades to restrooms, picnic shelters, replacement of picnic shelters, improvements to picnic shelters. That could be something that we would contemplate as a part of this itself. So I'm not sure if that benefited the discussion overall, but there's probably more to come as a part of our kind of comprehensive financial policy update. It will kind of help us further define the boundaries between operating and capital.
Yeah, I'm just a little bit concerned, just looking at the chart that you were describing with the green, yellow and red. A number of the projects in the red appear to be safety issues, you know, like bridge replacements and things like that, which which seem kind of urgent. And when they have a 2029 next to them, I just want to make sure that we're addressing the safety issues there.
Mr. Shambler?
Some of those bridges don't belong to us. That's kind of a placeholder. If the project requires a local match or if there's work that we are going to need to do that's not going to be funded by the state, most of those bridges actually don't belong to us. So those are more placeholders in case the state moves that project along so that we can, you know, do landscaping on both sides of the bridge or get things lined up. In the case of one of the bridges, we currently have a sewer line running across it that we have to get off. That's a separate project, but stuff like that, that's why they're there. So it's not necessarily a safety project. They're more placeholders so that we can move more quickly to get our ducks in the road. So that when the project goes through, we deliver a complete project to the citizens rather than go back three years after the state replaces the bridge, mess everything up and then finish it off. So that's why those are there.
Thank you. That makes sense.
All right. Any other comments this evening? Questions? So there are several upcoming dates for your calendars and you'll either have a, you'll either be on your calendar now or they will be soon. So June 9, mentioned the hybrid public open house CIP review. You're welcome to join us there. June 13, special budget workshop, council deliberations of the CIP, followed by regular council meeting. June 14, parliamentary procedure training. June 27, there will be a roundtable to discuss councils' priorities, followed by regular council meeting. And that's, that's it for the month of June, I believe. Any comments or questions? Okay, no, seeing, seeing no further council questions and no further business to come for council. So I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So who, so I'm going to?
By Councilor Martin, second by Councilor Vincent. To any name of session? All those groups, yeah?
I.
So we are adjourned. Thank you so much for your time.